All right, it is 7:01, so we'll open this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. First item of business is public comments. Do we have any residents who want to share any comments with us tonight? Rita?
Yes, I see one hand raised. If you give me one moment, I will promote the panelist. Stacy V. Once you are promoted to panelists, once you begin to speak your three minutes, we'll begin. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, good evening. Can you see me? Can you hear me? Even more importantly?
Yes.
Stacy Valenzuela, Kenmore. Here in Kenmore, we desperately need the 30% AMI affordable housing. The 2019 Affordable Housing Task Force report found that King County would need 244,000 low and very low housing units by 2024. The pandemic has accelerated this need. Homelessness will increase drastically as more are unable to stay sorry, got a text there, within their housing. In 2020, Kenmore only added 14% low and very low affordable housing, but 72% bonus rate housing. How disappointing. Even more disappointing is that our city planning expressed in the last survey that they don't know what qualifying low income level is. Low income level for very low is under 30%. And for low income is 50% or 50,000 annual income, 30% annual income. We need our leaders to require continuous housing and we need it now. I know that there are at least two other sites that are being built right now. We're hoping one will tell us that they are affordable housing, but we know the other one is more bonus rate housing. In the interest of all of our residents that might be kicked out of the mobile home parks as well in the upcoming years, it is important that we have a place for them to live as well as anybody in town for their children to be able to buy affordable housing units. I think also the majority of Kenmore wants to keep the single family lots as well. And they do not want missing middle at the $700,000 townhouse, six to eight of them, right up to next to each other. A lot of this takes away the treasure that Kenmore is. And we have to keep fighting to keep the parks, to keep the open spaces, to keep our trees, which are all important, not only for housing and for us humans, but also for the ecosystem, our air, our planet, the environment. So I hope you consider all this when you're putting together the rest of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Rita, do we have any others wanting to share comments tonight?
Um, no, I see no other hands.
All right, well, we'll move on to our next agenda item then. Approval of the October 19th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes, which were sent separately to all of us. Do we hear a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, then I would ask that you rule that they are accepted.
Do we have a second on that motion? All right, so moved in second, just to approve those. As said, any discussion on that motion? All right, Rita, I guess we'll have to do a roll call, so please go ahead.
Well, actually, my motion was that unless there is an objection, they would be approved.
Um. Lori or Debbie, I need some parliamentary help on that. Just to make sure we're crossing our proverbial Ts and dotting our Is. Do you know, if we can do that, do we need to have a motion of approval, or can we do it as Dwight indicated?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have my parliamentary rulebook right here, so I'm not sure which one would would work. So I would suggest you could, the safest way would be to take roll call vote, just to be sure. I don't have the rulebook. Looks like Dwight seems pretty sure about that, but.
I'm pretty sure about that, because if without objection, then they would be approved. If there's someone objects, then we would go to a vote. That's how that works. And that's in Robert's Rules of War. I'm sorry about the dog. I'm gonna hose my door.
You're saying Dwight, that we don't need to, we don't need to go through a motion process? We can just, you've made your statement and unless anyone objects, it will automatically go into approval, and is that?
But there was a second to my motion that without objection.
Correct.
And I believe Mark seconded it. So it's before the commission. And so what would happen is that you would ask if there's any objections, and if not, then they are approved.
Okay, are there any objections to the motion for the October 19th minutes? All right, see none? That means they're approved. So we will move on to our next item. The housing elements, missing middle. So invite Debbie and Lori to witness for that.
Hey, Chair Orange, all members of the planning commission. So tonight, we were talking about several things. You, at your last meeting, had developed some scenarios for missing middle preliminary scenarios. And what is before you tonight is a, there are amendments both to the land use and housing element that we would use as the comprehensive plan foundation to implement those scenarios. Along with that is the very early draft map of where the locations you had specified would be. So we'll look at that a little bit. And then lastly, we would talk about and receive some policy direction about zoning standards that would go along with duplex and triplex uses. So with that, I think probably for the comprehensive plan discussion, unless you have some preliminary questions, I would share my screen and we can go through the language. But you may have questions initially. No, okay, all right. So I'm going to put up the language. And, and I'll just, I'll, it may be easiest if I run through it first, and then you can ask questions. We could do it by element. Does that seem all right, unless I hear something different?
Lori, is it possible to make it a little bit larger?
Oh, really? I can try it, but as you know, I am not the best at this.
There's a little slider at the bottom of your screen on the right.
Oh, I see it. Look at that.
I don't even see it.
Yay.
Oh, very, very good.
Okay, I'll see if I can move it over this way, so you can get all the text. No, I'm gonna have to make it a little smaller. Can you see it? Thank you, Commissioner Greathouse, for teaching me a trick about Zoom. All right, so this first set of amendments is in the land use element. And as I said in the memo, these are by no means all of the amendments that would occur to the land use element. We'll be working on that for the next several months. We'll go back and, and finish addressing some of the commercial directions you had provided. We may even be making amendments after, for example, the transportation element is done. Hopefully only tweaks, but consistency is really important in the plan. So again, these are, I don't, I want to assure you that these are not all of the amendments to the land use element. But these are the ones specifically that would address the topic of missing middle housing. So this first one, and I put these by sections, this is a section in the land use element that is called future land use. And as you can see, I had eliminated the text that talks about protection and maintenance of single family residential areas, and then talked about neighborhoods offering a variety of housing types and densities, ranging from low density, single family areas to multifamily development downtown. And then a key concept of the vision statement, as you recall, is to support a diversity of housing types to provide accommodations affordable to all residents. The next change is to one of the objectives in the land use element. And here it talks about maintaining, enhancing, and enhancing all residential neighborhoods. So rather than specifically address single family neighborhoods, we're talking about all family, all residential neighborhoods, and maintaining and enhancing them by improving infrastructure and establishing appropriate development standards. These next three policies are under this objective, and that's why I put all three of them here, even though this last policy does not have any changes in it. So here, we would talk about providing the range of housing types and densities, including lower density, single family neighborhoods, medium density neighborhoods that combine single family housing with duplexes, triplexes, and cottage housing, and neighborhoods with larger multifamily developments. Policy LU 1.3.2 talks about.
Lori?
Yeah, sure.
Question on 1.3.1. Just a procedural question. We've got cottage housing included in the list here?
Right.
I thought we were going to be talking about that later on.
So cottage housing would be in the list, but the zoning standards, it wouldn't be a permitted use in the zoning code until the planning commission and then the council revisited the topic. So as you'll see later in the element and in the housing element, one of the implementing measures is to look at standards for cottage housing. So I didn't want to eliminate it entirely yet. I think, though, that it was clear from our earlier discussions that, that we would not be doing cottage housing amendments to the zoning code at this point.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not preempting that later discussion by including it in this policy.
No, not at all. In fact, it's important to remember that the comprehensive plan sets the policy direction. But how this direction is implemented is through the zoning code, in the municipal code. So for example, even if the city decided to move ahead with duplexes and triplexes, if the zoning standards weren't changed, it wouldn't be implemented. Now, you're supposed to have consistency, but this is consistency over a long time period, which is why you can have implementing actions that don't occur, for example, with this. With this go around, cottage housing might come up next year, it might come up in three years. But it would not be implemented until the zoning change occurred. Does that help?
Yes, I hear what you're saying. I just, the language here leads me in reading it as saying that we're adopting a policy where we would provide a range of housing, which includes all of the list here.
So let me run.
We may not do that.
Yeah, let me run. I can't remember whether that change is in the land use element or maybe down here. It's in the housing element, where cottage housing is specifically discussed as an implementing measure. So hold that thought, and then we'll look at the housing element and see if you still share, have that concern.
Okay, I don't want to hold this up. Go ahead.
Let me, let me ask a question here, though.
Sure.
Would this concern be addressed by inserting in the third line, including parenthetical, over time, in parenthetical, and then the list?
Um. So you're thinking the parenthetical would go right before cottage housing?
No, including, you see the third line?
Yeah, here, including.
Right, between including and lower density, I would insert parenthetical, over time, in parenthetical, lower density, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we would want that in terms of lower density. Let me go to the housing element and see if, really, I think. So here are changes to the housing element. And this is where, here's this policy, continue to consider opportunities to expand locations for these different types, including cottage housing. And then as an implementation strategy, this is where we adopt development standards for small houses on small lots and cottage housing. So this is the implementation standard over the next period, the 20-year period. So presumably, over 20 years, we would adopt development standards for small houses on small lots and cottage housing. Now, if the planning, if what the planning commission is saying is that you don't even want to ever consider cottage housing, that's a different discussion. My, and I might have misunderstood, my understanding was that you were interested in an incremental approach. The cottage housing would be considered in the future. In fact, you even talked about potential locations, again, within that same quarter mile distance. But what we had talked about was that we would not be developing zoning regulations to implement that direction at this time.
Right, so then nature of this document is over time, right? It's 20 years.
It's a 20-year plan.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I had some of the same concerns that Mike identified, which I think you've answered primarily already. So just to be clear, there are really no consequences for having this language in there, even if at some future point, the city says, no, we do not want to allow cottage housing in those neighborhoods. Is that?
So, so if the city in the future, when the question comes back, which it would have to do in relation to the zoning, if at that point, the city decided that they did not want to even consider cottage housing, they would amend the comprehensive plan and take out the words "and cottage housing." If they decided they did want cottage housing, as, as they went through the implementation measure, they could look at where it was, what the standards were, et cetera.
Right. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
I can't see the spot where you were about that last piece about cottage housing. Could you show that again on the screen?
Yeah, it's in the housing element. It's down toward the bottom of this attachment.
Right, well, it's kind of, okay.
So here's the housing element, and if I go all the way to the bottom, this is the implementation strategies. This is where.
I would personally be more comfortable in, in light of our discussion and also from my own sense as a planning commissioner, adopt standards for small houses on small lots and to, and may include cottage housing, rather than, the way it's written, technically, it says that it's to adopt. I would like to see on the, as with our discussion here, that something like we may adopt or something that does not re, right now, that in a comprehensive plan, that kind of sets the standard that we should adopt it. And I don't think that's where we're at right now.
Well, that, that was my concern as well. If you look at your policy H 1.3.2, I like the language there, I think is more a sense of where we are today, where it says in the second line, ensure blah, 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 accommodate a range of housing and styles such as. So instead of using the word provide, we're treating that as a list. It says, this is, these are the ones that we would consider. But that leaves, that doesn't, it removes that directive component to it, that I was responding to or reacting.
Okay, so, so it sounds like I've at least heard from maybe three commissioners that there's discomfort with the wording here. And I think what you're suggesting is that this should be. Do you want me to take out that combined single family housing with duplexes, tri, duplexes and triplexes and neighborhoods with larger scale multifamily developments? Do you want me to take out cottage housing altogether?
Out of that sentence, yes. And then you might suggest that such regulations may, in the future, include cottage housing.
Okay, I think we could leave that in the housing element. But if I hear from the majority of commissioners that you want me to take out cottage housing, I will do that.
Well, Lori, do you, do you even need to have duplexes, triplexes, that specific? Can you just say that combines single family housing with potentially other forms of, I don't know, multifamily house? I mean, we haven't even necessarily, you know.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm confused, because I was under the impression that the planning commission had settled on looking at duplexes and triplexes in a small part of the city as an incremental measure. So if that's true, I would recommend leaving duplexes and triplexes in there. I'm sensing that cottage housing is not comfortable, and that that one should come out. And then we can adjust whether it should be considered in the future in the housing element as an implementation measure. We can revise that language.
Considered. I would, I personally would like that without a commitment.
I don't think it's a commitment. I think it's just a possibility.
Way that's written in the other element, it's, it.
Well, could we stick with the land use element at this point?
No, no, I'm talking about the housing element. I was like.
To the other one.
Yeah.
So I make a suggestion here. What would satisfy my concern is if the third line strike including and have such as.
Oh, I go with that.
I'm sure that.
It's on the far left, right where your cursor is.
Right.
Right, so such as lower density, single family neighborhoods, medium density neighborhoods that combine, leave everything else the same?
Yep.
Just change including to such as?
Yes.
It gets less directive and more conditional, I think, yeah.
So maybe I could have a sense of whether there are four commissioners that, I can't see everyone. I see three, oh, four, there's four. Okay, so I'm going to take out including and change that to such as.
Mr. Chair, can you see all of us?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, no, I can't.
Okay.
At least on my screen, and I, this is the best.
No, I just wanted to know so that you could count votes.
And, and I don't want to make this like, this is a vote, because I know you're not ready to vote, but it helps me. I mean, I would not want to move ahead if I didn't have a sense that there was a majority of commissioners interested.
That's very fair. That's very fair. Now, that does not change my opinion about the housing element. I just want to point that out.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
The inclusive, but not mandatory language.
Right. Okay, so policy 1.3.2, this is that talks about the kinds of development standards that might be applied. And there's nothing in here that talks about building size and design. And I think that at least what I've heard from you from missing middle housing is that building size and design are important. And so I wanted to expand this policy to acknowledge that building size and design could be considered. Okay, okay. All right, now, a significant change here is in this policy, LU 2.1.2. And this is a change that city staff has been considering for quite some time. The planet, or the comprehensive plan's purpose is to provide a broad outline of where land use, the types of land use, their general organization, et cetera. And then the zoning, as I've said, is the implementing action to determine setbacks, height, lot size, et cetera. And so the way the, the Kenmore's comprehensive plan originally was set up was that the zoning actually appears in the plan, which has caused problems in the past, which is why down at the bottom here, there had to be exceptions written in to the densities that were identified in this table. So for example, if someone wanted to do a TOD development, it's unclear what the density should be. If someone wanted to do a development agreement in, for example, the RB zone, and they wanted to propose such a fantastic project that they were going to do 80 dwelling units per acre, they couldn't do it, because they would have to get a comprehensive plan amendment. So what staff is recommending is that we move away from specifying the zoning standards in the comprehensive plan. And instead, we talk about the implementing zoning districts. These zoning districts all have densities specified, so you don't have to put it here. And that way, if there needed to be a change in the zoning, you wouldn't necessarily have to do a comprehensive plan amendment. So the idea here for missing middle is you'd have low density residential zones. The current zoning districts are R1, R4, and R6. You would identify a medium density residential zone, which could be R6, or it could be R12. And what, oh, I was going to say, what we were thinking of.
But at some point, I'd like you to explain, help me understand why R6 shows up as both low.
Yeah, so the way it could work is that in the R6 zone, duplexes and triplexes would become permitted uses with potentially design standards attached, with clarifications about geographic locations, et cetera. So essentially, the R6 zone could be either low density residential, or it could be medium density residential, in specific cases where duplexes or triplexes might be allowed. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you. That helps. So essentially, R6 is kind of a transitional zone that could go either way.
Right.
It allows us the ability to be able to make that transition.
Correct.
I like it. Very clean.
And then high density residential are those higher residential zoning districts that are right around downtown. And then similarly, there, there are descriptions of what these commercial zones are, that they're mixed use, et cetera, et cetera. So for the, and then it goes on to describe the zones. So this is where it's describing the residential land use classifications. So new standards, most of which are reflected in this text, which is eliminated here, are provided. So low density residential, predominantly single detached dwelling units in the R1 and R4 districts, uses are clustered as appropriate in relation to environmental constraints. We've talked about those two zones. And medium density residential, a diversity of compatible housing types is expected at base densities varying between 6 and 18 dwelling units per acre. And it goes up to 18, because in the R12 zone, if you provide affordable housing, you can get up to 18 dwelling units per acre. Housing types may include single detached dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes. There's cottage housing and small scale apartment buildings. Again, if this classification is applied, it doesn't mean these uses are allowed, because remember, what we've said is that it's zoning district. So medium density residential can, up here, can only be R6 or R12 zoning district. And then high density residential, again, larger apartment buildings.
Lori, what happened to the R8?
We've never, well, maybe, we must have at some point had an R8 zone, but we don't have any R8 zones. We've never had, well, maybe we must have at some point had an R eight zone, but we don't have any R eight zoning right now. Um if the commission is thinking that might be something to be revisited in the future, we could put R eight in here. It's it's just not, we we don't have that zoning district, so I I didn't put it in.
Thank you.
Hey Laurie, I also really like the, you know, the distinction between low, medium, and high density. Could you go down to the next page uh where you uh kind of described them?
Yeah, sure.
One question I had, I I think your explanation makes a lot of sense, including small-scale apartment buildings. I I don't doubt that that's, you know, certainly a possibility, and it does say may include um. I I guess.
Yeah, this would be in the R twelve zone.
Okay, I think, well, maybe it's just a messaging. I mean, I I wonder if some, I don't know how many people read that, you know, we read the the plans here, but um I think that was, you know, certainly a source of pushback that I think we've heard is there's a concern there's gonna be these, you know, apartment buildings uh showing up in in uh, you know, single-family residential neighborhoods. And it's it's clearly not, I I see your distinctions and your nuance there, I just wonder.
I I wonder um if if other commissioners agree, one thing I could do with this one. Um see down here, it talks about predominantly larger apartment buildings with a variety of densities according to district. It could, we could change this, housing types may include single-detached duplexes, tri- cottage housing, and small-scale apartment buildings um dependent on district, or something like that. Uh that would take it back to the zoning district uh at that reference, so it would be clear that the relationship, what uses are allowed are tied to the zoning district.
I think that would help, personally.
Again, I I can't get a sense of nods or thumbs up or anything. Okay, I think I see four thumbs up. Okay, so we're gonna add that. Okay.
So I had a concern, and that is, that's a nice, at least a very good beginning in the low-density residential at the last part of the paragraph, are clustered, and then the term as appropriate in relation to environmental constraints. Why don't we have that in the other two medium and high-density points?
Yeah, they're they're not there because these two, these zoning districts, R six and higher density are affected by the um critical area rules. And clustering, as those districts are currently written, does not occur, except you have to be outside of the buffer. Um in R one and R four districts, there are specific rules already in place that say if, for example, you're, uh there's a lot of R one in the Swamp Creek corridor, you can do your density on your property, but you have to cluster it against seventy-third. Similarly, in the R four district, which are, those are predominantly steep slopes, there's a rule that says you can make smaller lots. You can't increase the overall density, but you can make smaller lots if you pull them away from the steep slope. So that's what we mean by clustering. And these other zoning districts don't have those provisions.
So I I am, and I greatly appreciate that. However, I would like the message that it says in the low-density, and if, you know, certainly you're correct that it doesn't hurt then to put as appropriate in relation to environmental constraints. Because you just outlined the constraints, and so there, I I think it's a stronger statement that we support the environmental um situation that's confronting us in Kenmore. So that's my perspective.
Okay. Um and so if others share that perspective, we will think of some language. I I would say that the natural environment element, which is part of the comprehensive plan, talks about the importance of preserving natural areas and protecting our environment. So, you know, they work together. It's not like this is sitting in one place and that's sitting in another place and the two don't speak. The the whole thing works uh together. But we could, if the commission wants to, we can think about how to word language here.
Well, I appreciate that, and uh Lori and and Debbie, I'm not questioning the uh competency or the intent of our staff. But I'm also looking at it from the message that we want to purvey to our constituents and our residents and the people that are in our city, that this, all we're just is in a different spot, restating what's important to our city. That's all it is. I'm I'm not suggesting that, at at least at this point, that there's any issues related to what you just said.
I support what Dwight has just said. I had that same thought when I was reading a different area, and perhaps we'll we'll come to it, and I can point it out if we do. Um but I I think that it could help us move toward, move. I know that, I know that these elements do all work together, that they're all there and they're supposed to function as a whole. However, when they remain separate as separate pieces, I think it's um a a a harder leap sometimes to understand that they are integrated. And so if we can, you know, cross-pollinate them with with similar language throughout, that might help us move toward a kind of a really integrated thinking about them. That's, so that that's why I would support what Dwight is saying.
So I have a couple of suggestions. Um if the commission agrees, uh I don't think this is an issue exclusively related to um residential uses. So one approach would be to add a policy, and where that would be appropriate, I have no idea because I haven't looked at it yet, uh to add an overall policy in the land use element that talks about the importance of protecting and preserving the environment as new development occurs. So that's one approach, a general policy in the land use element that would talk, speak to all land uses. If, on the other hand, the commission is specifically interested at this point in the residential aspects of this, because we're working in on the missing middle language, then what I would suggest is that we maybe look at this introductory section right here. The purposes of the residential land use classifications are to implement comprehensive plan policies for housing quality, diversity, afford and affordability, and to efficient. Uh we could put to efficiently use land, public services, including high and energy, and to protect the city's um sensitive areas and environment, or something like that. So the commission, if you want to move in this direction, again, my recommendation would be either to have a standalone policy in the land use element, or if you're specifically focused on this residential aspect, to put something in this introductory language.
I like option two. I think that that meets the need for this particular uh this section.
I have no objection. I'd like to hear what Tracy has to say.
Can you tell that I'm muting and unmuting myself?
Yes.
You don't wanna hear you here, it's muttering in the background.
Um I think, I I feel like it's un-unclear to me right now. I feel like I'd wanna think about your question more fully before I felt really grounded in my answer. But the, but this, this um portion that we are looking at right here, that you have on the screen, I think is an example for me of why I would like to see more cross-pollination, because there already is. It just doesn't include environmental concerns, since we've got transportation, as mentioned there, energy use, like those aren't strictly about housing. But they do appear there, but the environment doesn't. So I just feel like any anywhere that we are bringing in other elements, I think it makes sense to consider, like, what are those other things we're bringing in, and what are we leaving out? And and how, you know, how do we wanna to treat that? And I would be in favor of um being as integrative as possible and inclusive as possible of 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 the environment, and and other things like that, because that is, I mean, at base, it's our our home.
Yeah. All right, so I saw three sort of nods of agreement. Others of you I can't see. Uh is there sort of a general sense that I should add in a comment about environmental protection to this introductory clause? Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
All right.
One more uh thought here, Laurie. Uh on the high-density residential section, we we particularly specifically call out apartment buildings, which is one of many different types of ownership opportunities. And particularly here, I could see uh an opening here for for condominiums and association type of ownerships. So could we either call out more types of ownership in addition to apartment, which is obviously rental units, but also more ownership? Or just instead of saying apartment building, a predominantly larger residential building?
Yeah.
Something along those lines. So we, I like calling out condominiums and whatnot in particular, but if that's too much words.
Well, it could easily say larger apartment or condominium buildings, or uh we can just say larger residential buildings.
Larger rental and or owner occupied, something like that.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't wanna get um.
I know owner occupied has a, that's not what I meant to say.
Yeah, I think I think it'd be better either to say apartment or condominium building. I mean, th- those both deal with how ownership.
Either could actually be a rental as well as the occupied by the owner, but yeah. I just wanna have, make sure we have that ownership yet understood in there. Not just exclusively rental.
Right. So uh if I don't hear objections, I'll change that to apartment or condominium buildings. Okay.
And when you're ready, Laurie, I have a question um regarding uh something that's on the screen right now. So in the medium-density residential category, we have our six is is called out, and we do have our missing middle housing types listed. So my understa- I I think I just need help thinking this through. My understanding is that our current recommendation as a commission as a whole is that our missing little, oh, I'm getting some feedback. Are you all, can you hear me? Okay, everyone? Yeah, okay.
Let me mute myself.
That our missing middle types are duplexes and triplexes would be in probably likely R six zones, but within a certain distance, so not R six zones throughout the city.
No.
So, and I I did see that that is, that's reflected in language further down in the document, but here it just makes it sound like our policy is that these housing types would be throughout. And maybe this is just something like a concern that I have, or something that stuck, stuck with me, similar to what um Mike called out before, and I just, I just wanted to talk through that to, so I could feel more settled about it.
So you'll remember that the group decided that we would add language at the end of this sentence that said, housing types may include, and then there's the list, dependent on district. So what that means is that it would be dependent on whether it was a R six or an R twelve to address um those two zones. And then what we talked about in terms of the zoning is that in the R six zone, duplexes and triplexes would become permitted uses, but they would be restricted geographically to match the areas that you all have expressed interest in. And those zoning changes are moving ahead with the comprehensive plan changes, so there's no mystery here. Uh it's not that you're gonna adopt this and all of a sudden there's gonna be small-scale apartment buildings in R six, no way. Again, the zoning is what determines what is appropriate, and that's why we're bringing the zoning forward for duplexes and triplexes at the same time.
Yeah, I I understand that. It's just that I was reading district as being the R one is a district.
Right.
R six is a district, right. So when I read this, between R six and R eighteen, housing types may include, and even, so depending on district, so I understand that we're not saying that all these housing types will be in R six. But it still reads to me like R six is the district, and that's the one that we've said that missing middle housing. It just makes it seem like it would be in any R six.
Yeah, so there's one of the.
Policy. That's, that's how I read it. Like, that's.
Yeah. There's one other piece to this, and this is an important one, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up earlier, but there is a map that goes with the comprehensive plan, land use element. So that map would specify low-density residential, medium-density residential, and high-density residential on the map. So the only place on the map where this would appear would be in those R six areas that you have already determined would be appropriate to consider duplexes and triplexes, and in the R twelve area. Does that help?
So you're saying that, yeah, so basically.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be the whole R six area. There would be a very small R portion of R six that was in the comprehensive plan shown as medium-density residential.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, looking at that map, Laurie, really helped pull it together, that you've got two different influences going on here. What what is, one is the underlying zoning, and one is particular densities uh uh area. And how an R six could be something in one, i- i- in low density is something entirely different than a middle density category. I I think you have to almost look at the map to to see how that works.
Yeah.
So I don't know, maybe you wanna think about if it makes sense in the flow of things to have that map a little bit earlier, whether that might help future readers to see that sooner rather than later, but.
Right, right. And um and we'll be redoing the whole comprehensive plan map. Uh so you will see that. It'll look, it 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 won't be the same map as, you know, when show the transit stops, et cetera. But it'll be, it'll show low, medium, and high-density areas that match the map that was in your packet.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you could just tie the map to the, these description in some way.
Yeah, and in fact, up up here, um there's a comment about the map. Where is this? Here. Figure LU three, the Kenmore Land Use Plan. That's the map. So.
Yeah, yeah.
It definitely is included in the chapter.
That's where I slowed down, because I had to go out and find that before I can read the rest of it. Oh, okay, now I get it.
Now I see where this is. Okay, so are we ready to go on the next section? All right, so this uh policy talks about high-density. It talked about multifamily. And and so if we're talking about um medium-density residential, then I wanted to change this to say high-density residential is applied in or near downtown. And then later in the uh, in this objective, is where we talk about medium-density classifications should be applied within a walkable distance to transit and services. And uh the other thing added to this objective was to um some, rather than acknowledging neighborhood character, really what we're trying to do is ensure compatibility between different building types. All right, and then in terms of implementation strategies in the land use element, um this uh types of regulations and rules that should be reviewed include permitted uses in low and medium-density residential zones. That's to acknowledge that this issue of where medium-density housing is appropriate could be revisited over the twenty years. You know, what what you all have talked about is that this is an incremental approach, but that for the future, um these types of regulations could be reviewed, depending on success or of the approach or not the success of the approach. of the approach or not the success of the approach. All right, so the housing element. I left the first clause and then this language is, is from incorporation, and I thought we are many, many years from incorporation, and I think that the community has changed. And so I eliminated this section about how, what the desire was when the city was first incorporated. And then this is where plan appropriate land use designations and zoning categories to accommodate projected household growth. That's the objective. And then again, three policies under that objective ensure zoning regulations accommodate a range of housing styles and types in appropriate locations, and this is where these other types appeared, and so you may have some concerns about that. Consider neighborhood compatibility as well as housing needs. And then this is where continue to consider opportunities to expand locations for medium-density residential housing types. So this was the idea that, you know, you've agreed that this is an incremental approach. So as policy for the next twenty years, you could continue to consider opportunities. So I'm going to stop there because I, I think you may have some adjustments.
Hey, Lori.
Policies, yeah.
Can, can we go back really quickly, back to the implementation strategies? I'm sorry, I didn't speak up quick enough. But that little change there about the permitted uses in low and medium-density residential zones. I guess reading that the, the first time and reading specifically low and low-density residential zones, it, it brought to mind R one, R six, R four and R six. And I know it discusses previously that, you know, we wouldn't be allowing this in anything below R six. But would it be possible to maybe just clarify that again and say permitted uses in appropriate districts of low and medium-density residential zones?
Like permitted uses in appropriate areas of low and.
Yeah, I, I, that, that would be the, the, I guess, a better term. Because I know that we felt as a commission very strongly that we didn't want changes to impact the R one and, and R four, especially for the environmental impacts that that would create. And so that would just be a clarification. Because I, I mean, reading this, it, it just kind of stuck out to me that, you know, it says low and it doesn't quite specify exactly which. Yeah, yeah. Which would, I guess, would be a majority of the, the low density residential zones, but i- is it possible to maybe clarify that and say the appropriate?
Oh, yeah.
So I have a question about appropriate. Is that descriptive enough? Because probably appropriate means different things to different people. Is there something more specific?
How about permitted uses in low and medium-density residential zones without environmental constraint? Which I think is what Commissioner Lewis is talking about, really. He was talking about R one and R four, again, tied to environmental protection.
Could, could we say? Could we say permitted uses in low and medium-density residential zones excluding R one and R four? Or is that too broad, I guess?
Yeah, I think that's probably a little too broad because in fact, probably it shouldn't read zones. It should permitted uses in low and medium-density residential areas. If environmental protection is ensured, if environmental, i- is that, if that's where the commission is headed, I'll work on the language. But I, I think if they, if the idea that the commission is considering is that we're going to clarify that we don't want to consider this in areas that are treated in a certain way because they're constrained environmentally, I'll come up with the language. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I think so, yeah. A little more clarification on that point.
I see two head nods. I can't see the other heads.
I support that. Maybe I'll just say it in a slightly, slightly different way to see if this helps is that I, I think this reads as if we, that it's all on the table for further use anytime. Whereas we have been talking about how important it is that we not keep considering those very environmentally sensitive areas for development. And, and I think it's just being clear about that, but it feels appropriate. Support Nathan on that.
All right. So back to this one. This is where we want zoning regulations to accommodate a range of housing styles and types in appropriate locations. And we're considering neighborhood compatibility. And then this one, H one, three, three, consider, continue to consider opportunities to expand locations for medium-density residential housing types. And that again was for the in- the incremental approach.
Yeah, Laurie, I had a minor wordsmithing for consistency in one point, three point three, you say including duplexes, triplexes in. One point, three point two, you say such as, I think I would prefer such as, I know we, I think I made that change in another section earlier.
On one, three, three, so instead of including such as.
Yeah, because I think that'd be consistent with what we.
It is consistent with what you did earlier. Is everybody comfortable with that? You'll have to speak out if you're not. Okay. All right.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
In this section here in three point two and three point three in our list, our such as list. Here we have added small houses on small lots, which we don't have in our other policies up above in our list. Is that intentional or should we?
Yeah, it, it is kind of intentional, and I'll tell you why. It's because the small houses on small lots. When we talked about that, we talked about doing that through the plating process. And so it, it's kind of, it, it's not done through zoning. It's done through the plating process. So it's a different, it's a whole different part of the municipal code. And, and that's why I included it here, but I didn't include it in land use where there's the map and the description of districts.
Okay, I get that. Thank you, that helps.
All right.
And we're going to come back to small houses on small lots at a, at a different time.
Right, right. So objective three point two, it talks about affordable housing, and, and I just wanted to make this change because this is something that we're going to have to, the county has come out with new terminology. Now it's extremely low, very low, low and moderate, so I just am going to try to be consistent with their terminology, and that's why that change occurred. And then this is where I added in the policy about tiny home villages. So this was to evaluate tiny home villages as a way to address transitional homeless housing or provide an additional housing type. So again, in the note, in the idea that this would be something to do in the future to evaluate tiny home villages, that's kind of what we talked about. That's why I put this here.
Hey, Laurie. I think it's, I think it's certainly implicit here, but I I made this point before, I think this is very much a, you know, a regional effort and, and, and issue, and I just wonder if we could add language to the effect that sort of in collaboration with other entities, just to make it very clear that it's not necessarily the city of Kenmore by itself, looking at, at that as a potential option. So that's my thought and suggestion to make it really explicit that it's a, you know, beyond the city of Kenmore type of.
Um, well, you certainly could say coordinate with other jurisdictions. It's written as if Kenmore is going to evaluate it for Kenmore, not that Kenmore is going to evaluate it for Boffel or Seattle or Shoreline.
Some language indicating there would be coordination or collaboration or, you know, with other, not just other jurisdictions, but other entities. So.
Oh, okay, like, like community-based organization.
Right, or, or.
Okay.
Function like.
We could add something like collaborate with other organi- again, I can wordsmith this, collaborate, ideas, collaborate with other organizations.
Sure, or entities or whatever.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to add that unless I hear objection. All right, and then this objective again talks about integrating affordable housing. And there was a pre-existing policy about accommodating accessory dwelling units in single-family districts. But again, we've changed the terminology, so this would be low and medium-density residential districts. So for example, the reason that this change would be important would be if you had a single-family house in one of the areas that we've said could be medium-density residential. And if that single-family house wanted to have an ADU, you would need a policy like this. Otherwise, it just says, if you just say low-density residential districts, it means that that opportunity would be foreclosed for any single-family house in a medium-density residential district.
So does our prior discussion and prior wording with regard to environmental concerns still fly?
I, I don't think it applies here. We, the ADU rules again, are the ADU rules, and there was not discussion of limiting ADU rules except by the critical area rules that apply to every development.
So what you're suggesting is that this was a prior policy and a prior discussion and determination by the council and the planning commission.
Last year, or a year and a half ago, yeah, they just changed the accessory dwelling unit rules.
I understand that, so I just wanted, so when they made those changes, did they include environmental concerns in those?
Not specifically. Again, every development that occurs in the city has to comply with the natural environment element of the comp plan and those regulations. I think I understand what you are suggesting, and if the commission wants to do this, this is fine, but at some point I think adding environmental concerns to every policy in the land use or housing element. Kind of, I get the cross-pollination idea, but I think you should do that sparingly where it's really important.
Well, this can be pretty important in some areas, but, but going back to our other agreement is that that introductory language in the preamble, let's just call it preamble, you know what I mean? This, that would still apply to this. Is that right?
That preamble is actually in the land use element, so it's not directly in front of this language. If, if the commission wants to say something about allow and accommodate accessory dwelling units in low and medium-des- residential districts. I, I don't even know how to word that. Consistent with environmental protection. How about that?
Well, that's possible, but you know, is, is there a spot? You know, I'm willing to, to, to be flexible on this. I'm just saying, so is there preamble spot that we could do the same thing for this element? Do you get what I mean?
Again, it would be a general policy in the housing element that would reinforce the language in the natural environment element. That's, it would be a standalone policy. There's no pre, there's not the same preamble text in this element, but it could be standalone.
And a standalone could be overall, correct? Okay, I, I'm, I could live with that. I don't know if my other colleagues could live with that.
Okay, I've heard from, I see two yeses, we want a general policy in the housing element about environmental protection. Okay, I see three heads, I see four heads nodding, okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Sorry, I have to make make these notes. All right, so the next section is again the implementation strategies.
Laurie, procedural question on H three point, three point two. Talking about ADUs in low and medium density. Low and medium density, of course, is a new designation. Have we checked to make sure that this would be consistent with the existing ADU rules related to single-family?
It, yeah, it would be.
Having, no, they overlap correctly and we weren't leaving something out there.
No, and I'll, I'll look at that again, but I'm, I am ninety-five percent certain that the way the ADU rules are written is that it, it has to be, an ADU has to be accessory to a single-family dwelling. So there's certainly not another type of dwelling that could have an ADU. I think you have a duplex with an ADU. It's, it's a, it's a single-family dwelling, but I'll confirm that.
Yeah, that was my concern is, do we have a low and medium density isn't the same thing as single family, so there may be.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
So Laurie, to save you some headache and too much pencil writing, I know you're getting to the next spot, and where it says small houses on small lots, which may include may include cottage housing, if we could just do that, I think that would probably solve that little problem that I see coming quickly.
So i- in terms of implementation, they actually are two different things. Cottage housing is more like a condominium project where there's a centralized courtyard. It's, it may be the ownership under the house may be independent, but the property as a whole is probably owned by an organization. I wrote the collection of, of homeowners. Small houses on small lots are something different. Done through the plating process, they're independent houses on small lots. So it's a, it's a different, they're, they're not quite the same thing. Which is why I've indicated that they're separate here.
Right, oh, no, I'm, I'm addressing the concern about cottage housing that the commission has
So, yeah, and, and in fact, it was we were going to change this word, we're going to change adopt, right? To.
You can adopt or you could. No, and then, no, you could say, and which may include cottage housing. That way it's it's there if somebody wants to deal with it and, but it's not mandatory. Where adopt development standards for small houses on small lots, when you say adopt, that's a, that's an action verb to say that we should do that.
So how about, how about adopt development standards for small? So how about, how about adopt development standards for small houses on small lots and consider cottage housing?
That's fine.
Is that? Okay.
That's the same, that's just wordsmithing, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I just knew that was coming, so I'm just.
All right, and then this is the, uh, implementation strategy to continue to take an incremental approach. So it doesn't commit the city to anything really, except continuing to look at it. So. Any additional? Comments or questions?
Yeah, uh, the, wow, the bullet, about the sixth one down, implement strategy planning coordination with Arch. I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea, uh, in terms of a tactic. But do we wanna call out one specific? Entity as who we're going to be implementing our strategy plan? Coordinating our strategy plan with, it just, it's kind of popped out of the.
Yeah, so the reason Arch is here is because Arch is our housing planner. So you all know that. Arch works for the thirteen, fourteen cities. That hire Arch and. And fund their operations, and so that's why Mike Stanger comes to our meetings and, and. But he does our data analysis and that kind of thing. So Arch developed actually the housing strategy plan that the city adopted. Which is, and when we are doing an implementation measure like the ADU work or. Uh, the manufactured housing community work, et cetera, they have worked with us. To try to bring, there, uh, there are a couple of things. First of all, they're experts. And second of all, they tried to look at what's other jurisdictions in the area are doing to. Help lead us on a path to consistency, that doesn't work, but that's the idea. Um, so that's why it says in coordination with Arch specifically.
Yeah, so I, I understand that's what it is, so. Is what we're doing is we're saying that we are going to, uh, develop a relationship or have an arrangement of some sort. Uh, with, as you described it, a planning entity. Could, so could we say as part of our implementation strategy is to do that, to identify? That body without specifically calling out Arch.
Well, Arch is that.
Sometime in the future, it could be somebody else.
No, I don't think so. I mean, I don't mean to be a flip, but we pay Arch. We commit money to Arch to be our housing planner. Um, I would be comfortable. S- suggesting perhaps that it, we just say implement the housing strategy plan, period. If that's a concern.
Yeah, I mean, this is a technical point, I just don't want us to get us into a situation where at some point. Because we're talking about a long range. Change this in the future, but yet the hope is we don't change it very often. That if city reconsidered who it was going to have an arrangement with or how it was going to do business in the future. They wouldn't have, we, we wouldn't have a situation where you go back to this element and these implementation strategies and say, well, no, you said that.
Okay, so if the rest of the commission is comfortable, I'll take off in coordination with Arch and just say implement the housing strategy plan. Hey, see a couple hands? Uh-oh. Can somebody who can see everybody tell me if we have? General consensus? Okay, all right.
Laurie, is there any downside to taking Arch out? But I, I just am not sure.
No.
Okay.
I don't think it will change the relationship at all. All right, any other comments or questions?
Just an edit, uh, observation, the next to the last bullet that starts evaluating report. Looks like there's a, a phrase at the end there. How the elements have been achieved. I'm not sure the.
Uh, yeah, I think that's a duplicate.
Yeah.
That's a very good catch, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Laurie, for all your hard work on this. This is extremely difficult and tedious and time-consuming.
Yes. Which means I'm not done yet.
Okay. One more thing, okay, I'm ready.
Uh, thanks Dwight for setting me up there. Uh, and the next one down below, just reading, revise the strategy plan is needed to achieve more. Of the housing elements goals.
Uh-huh.
The use of more.
Okay.
I don't know, that, that, that just doesn't. That doesn't seem right. I think it would read better if it says revise strategy plan as needed to achieve the housing elements.
Yeah. Okay.
We're not planning to fail, are we?
Got it. Anything else? Okay. All right, so, um, there are two last pieces. Uh, I wanted to pull the map up on the screen because I needed your feedback on, um. One part of it, and then after that, we'll talk just briefly about, um, missing middle zoning. So I'm gonna, uh, share my screen again and pull up the map. And then we can, um. I can tell you what. What my question is, so. As I noted in the memo. The purple outline is the R six zoning within a quarter mile of transit stops, which is what we talked about. And you can see up here, uh, here's an example of where, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, you can see up here. That there's a circle, there's a half semi-circle here. And that's because this map was developed based around transit stops. So these little, um, red triangles are transit stops along, uh. Both away and then down Juanita, coming across on one fifty-fifth and down eighty-fourth. The question is, should it, should the quarter mile be measured? Around transit stops, or would it be better to just do a consistent line? It's not so much an issue down here because of the way the R six zoning falls, but it just seems. A little odd to me to do it around specific stops, but you could say, well, what we're interested in is. Walking to stops, specific stops, so maybe it should be from transit stops, um. So do you have any reaction to that, whether we should make these lines, um. A consistent, a consistent distance, the quarter mile from Boffel Way, for example. Versus a quarter mile from this transit stop and this transit stop.
I'll, I'll jump in and say, yeah, that's kind of the way I really had originally envisioned what the intent was, because. It really does chew up the map here.
Yeah.
It, it, how, how do you, you know, that'd be awfully hard to understand. I think particularly for a developer to come in, and I don't know what you do by. Having those bows and whatnot, so I think the idea is, we're, what we're trying to do is create levels of development here. Or segments of development, having something, a layer that's one quarter from major transit route. Five twenty-two, and then we have. So you have high-density, medium-density beyond it. I think that's much more easier to conceptualize it. I would imagine for, for planning and the review purposes, it would be easier to manage.
Yeah, I think down here it will be hard to do the cor- that corridor concept because we are talking about, um. Only the R six zone, and it's really broken up by the R four zone, but. Uh, I think a staff would prefer to have it in corridors as much as possible. And corridors that follow, uh, property lines, um. There are a few places where these lines split parcels, for example, which is never a good thing when you're talking about, um. Trying to apply future zoning in an area, and then there are some other, um, oddities. For example, you can see these little areas are a quarter mile from transit, but there's no connection. Uh, so it would be a much longer distance, uh, to actually get to transit, so, um. If, if the commission is comfortable with me making this corridors as much as possible and then doing refinements so that we don't have oddities here and. And having it line up with parcel lines, I would move forward with that direction.
Well, I remember a famous planning commissioner. Down there in the bottom of my screen by the name of Nathan. Talking about. Some of this issue that just because it's a quarter mile away does not mean it's accessible. And that there were some difficulties with regard to some of these neighborhoods actually. Getting to their bus stops, um, in a reasonable manner, and so that's one comment. I actually do agree with your pain and suffering up on Boffel Way. Because those bus stops, let's take the one that you looked, those two on the, um. See, that would be the west. Side of Boffel Way, those two last stops. Well, let's just say they moved the stops. So then what happens? I, I, I'm not sure. I mean, those could have back along. Along that corridor, those stops could move at the discretion of metro and sound transit easily. Um, and then the same issue that the famous Nathan has brought up about the south. Uh, east side would apply to the north-west side. Because I, I know that some of that, those hills in that purple. Area is, are, they can be a little difficult, um, to, to, they're not exactly, they, they look like a quarter mile, but. They're a little tougher than that, so, you know, up along, I guess my feeling. Is. Carefully up along Boffel Way, I could see more of a solid line. Um, because it's, uh, maybe a little lower on some, but. Uh, taking in a more of a generic line there, but, um, down in the southeast section. And you did point out, you know, we're not gonna build on the golf club, but they're not gonna walk across the golf club to get there. And I, I like that point that you need to fix the little inconsistencies, that's. That's absolutely, uh, fine, so I'll leave it at that and let, um, some of the, your other folks. Just chime in on what you think. It's diff- it's a difficult line to draw.
I think it is a difficult line to draw. One thing I was just thinking about is like where the actual stop. Would matter to me. In my ability to walk to it, especially given that I have a, a person with shorter legs that I walk with, so that. I don't mean that as any insult, it's just a reality, like we can, that's one of. I'm gonna mute.
So I, I might jump in here and just say that, you know, this is a. An important map, but we are not going to go to every parcel and determine whether a person can walk to a bus stop. I will tell you after we had that conversation about steep slopes and locations. I went out and drove almost every street in this area. To determine whether in fact areas were walkable or not, and yes, there are some steep areas, but for the most part. This area is relatively. Easily walked. That was from my perspective. Again, I was in a car. And I didn't go on every street, I went on several streets, but the R four zoning really. Captures a lot of the very steep areas, um, on, in the southeast part. Of the city, and similarly, um. Uh, on the north side of five-two-two, so I would encourage you not to, um. Even try to identify parcel by parcel which can actually walk to a stop. I think a quarter mile is a reasonable distance and. And the idea, again, we know, um, from the information last time that, that at least on vacant and redevelopable parcels, there's not very much. Uh, land on those parcels that would convert to duplexes or triplexes. And someone would be making the decision about whether it was or wasn't a good location. Uh, for that use, so. I guess my recommendation is not to get into the, not to get to the point of. Really trying to assess every, um, every parcel, but rather to stick with the corridor idea. Stick with R six, which will eliminate a lot of the. Steep areas or areas encumbered by, um, wetland systems, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Laurie, and I, I was, that's where I was heading in my comment before is that the walk of, the, the, you know, the walking to the specific bus stop seems almost. Not quite, but almost arbitrary to me, because, um. Because in some cases, people will be able to easily walk to the bus stop within that quarter, and in some cases, they won't. So we're not meeting an exact. If that's our criteria, we, we wouldn't be hitting it with this, even with this line, so I. I, I'm not proposing any different action, I'm just noting that for the group and for the record.
If I may, I have another question or two. So let's, let's say that we adopted this, or this is what the plan was, whatever it is, so. Um, and three years from now. Um, some. Some of these stops move or whatever happens, and so that would. Uh, mean that there would be a change in the purple line. So my concern is, is that we. I think the fair thing to do is to say, well, if you were in the purple line once. You're still, you know, you are grandfathered in the purple line for so many years, or. I don't know what's the right thing to do, but I'd hate to have, you know, s- uh, we need to adjust the purple line as appropriate. But I wouldn't wanna take away, um, somebody's. Plan, just because all of a sudden the transit stop moved and the purple line moved, I don't think that's exactly fair. And, uh, I just don't know how to, how that, what we need to, how we need to deal with that, or if we need to deal with that.
Well, you know, I think using a corridor approach helps to address a good deal of that, Dwight. Uh, and I think you're absolutely right, we've gotta have some rules here that provide, uh, owners and developers some consistency or understanding, so. I think, yeah, it, once you're in the zone, you, you remain in the zone, I think that's easier to manage and conceptualize if we do it on a corridor basis. One of the, uh, other rules that I would suggest, Laurie, that you talked about split lots. Create a rule, uh, if it's a split lot, it's, it's outside the zone. That's what I would say, you could say it's inside the zone, but I, I think if you have a simple rule like that, you could reduce down, you could help. Make decision-making today, also make it more, uh, understandable to, to other folks.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with the corridor approach too for all those reasons that were shared by Dwight and, and Mike and, and others.
Uh, I'm in support of that as well, and kind of, uh. I, I'm in line with, uh, what Commissioner Vanderline was saying as well, um. I, I kind of agree with that approach where if, you know, there's a property that's not wholly encompassed, then we probably shouldn't include it. So, um, I, I did like that point and I had the exact same idea, so I'm in support of that as well. And, uh, I think a quarter, or a corridor approach would be the best option in terms of. Um, well, I mean, like, like, uh, my, my colleagues have been saying, you know, we, we have no control over where these stops are and where they move to and change, and so. It wouldn't be fair to keep changing the map, so I think a corridor approach would. Make the most sense, and then, yes, Laurie, now we can shave off those other little islands of a quarter mile out there by the golf course, I don't think. Those are appropriate to. I don't think those are appropriate to include in what we're trying to achieve here.
All right, well, stop sharing. And we can talk about the last topic under missing middle housing. And that really has to do with development of zoning regulations. So I had posed a series of questions about form and scale, design standards and parking. And if I have the commission's general direction there, then it will put me in a place where I can begin to write zoning regulations. So for form and scale, that means how big is the house? Or the duplex or the triplex? And, and by the way, the third attachment in your materials was a summary of what other jurisdictions have done. So we think that there are three approaches that you could use for duplexes and triplexes. The first one is to not have any special standards. So a duplex or a triplex could build to the same scale, setback, lot coverage, height of an existing new single family or new single family residence. The second approach would to, would be to specify a maximum size. And that would say it can't be any bigger than so many square feet. And, and the staff would not recommend, for example, a duplex could be side by side or stacked. That means one on top of another. For a triplex, staff would recommend against allowing a stacked triplex unless the commission was interested in that, because that would be three full stories, which would likely be out of scale with neighboring development. And then the third approach is to look at what's going on on neighboring lots and try to allow something on the lot in the middle that's sort of an average of the two lots on either side. And I've seen that done for height, for example, in City of Seattle. If you have a tall building on one side, another shorter one on the other, you can average the heights and that's your new height limit. I've also seen it used in setbacks. I haven't used, seen it used in this way, but innovation is always possible. Staff is recommending that we set a maximum size. We think that would be the cleanest and the most predictable. And that if we allow structures to go all the way to setbacks, still meeting impervious, the structure actually could be quite large. Most houses don't necessarily build to that, but we think setting a maximum would control the size of the new development. So your reactions?
Anybody have a thought?
The direction that my thinking went here was something that I actually have been thinking about almost the entire time we've been having this discussion. And I'm not sure that I have said it yet, so I want to say it here. Is that I have agreed that this, these kinds of housing types should fit into our neighborhoods and not be so different that they disrupt the feeling of the neighborhood. And I think generally I've accepted like that we would look at surrounding homes and have them fit in. However, I, there are some places where I feel like the new development is too big for the lot size, like the houses are just getting very large on these very small lots. And I feel like that is, that is not a pattern of development that I would like to support moving forward. And so I would like to use this opportunity to make a course correction and not simply follow that pattern of development, but allow different housing types in that pattern. But to try to shift the pattern of development so that it is more people oriented, you know, more environmentally friendly in terms of the amount of the actual lot it's taking up and so on. So I, if we can use far floor area ratio for that, and then that is something that I feel supportive of, which I think is your option B. Is that right, Lori?
It would either be maximum size or a far.
Yeah.
Other responses here? Go ahead, Mike.
I'd share Tracy's concerns as well. I'm not sure B satisfies me that we would actually be able to end up with a development that was rational to the size of the lot. Maximum size could mean lots of things. A far would probably help us get there. But it just, conceptually, I'm not getting that. Whereas when I think about A or C, I got a pretty good sense of what you're going to end up with is going to be within consistent with the neighborhood and what is already there and would fit in. I just throw something out and I thought about this somewhat, but Lori, you folks need to say whether it's reasonable. I was thinking if we had something like A, so you could, if you were, if a developer was to propose a a development, a duplex that was consistent with single housing community standards, then it gets a pretty easy pass through the acceptance process. If they wanted to go beyond that, then it would trigger something like C. So we could give them an ability to be able to build and get acceptance fairly soon. So I mean, it wouldn't be an expedited, but it would probably be less of a review standard. They could show that it met existing single family housing standards. If they wanted to go beyond that, then they had to provide some more additional information of the type you described in C. That doesn't say I wouldn't exclude B as a possibility, but before we, I would feel comfortable going there. I'd have to understand just how that would work. Probably go back to something like we did with accessory dwelling units. It's okay, what does that look like on a typical R6 lot? I'm not, I agree with not stacking triplexes. And of course, we're only talking about duplexes here. So I think we need to have some discussion about triplex, what the standard would be for those.
Well, I generally feel in the same light that Mike does, but I think more in line with what, getting, you know, a little closer to what I think Tracy was. I think that C is kind of speaking more to that in that it's more consistent with the existing development. This is a very difficult and tricky subject with regard to how the actual building and zoning requirements will be written. And, but I think the concept that we look at, that the new building, whatever it is, is consistent with the neighborhood structures that are existing is a reasonable perspective to pursue. We've already included other opportunities for certain specific things like corners or maybe on arterials. Or we've said that we would look at those options as a, as a possibility. So that's, that does not exclude those types of situations. Just not, we're not excluding that by being more restrictive within neighborhoods. But I, I am sensitive to building one of those huge homes that's going to be a duplex or triplex right in the center of a, of a single family area. And I mean, I really get what Tracy's trying to say. And I, but on the other side, I also see where Mike's going to. And so we just need to balance this.
Yeah, I may be not understanding what the best path to executing what my idea is. But I do feel concerned about our current pattern of development. And I would not like to recommend that we just continue down that path, just adding different housing types. Because I think that's just going to perpetuate the problem. So I would hope that we could somehow find a way to, like I said, do a course correction here. And I guess it seemed like B would be the way to do that, but maybe I am wrong about that. And I'm open, I'm open, definitely open to conversation about, about that issue.
Other thoughts? From?
Again, I would say I think B could work, but we would have to build in, have some more specifics. It's just, how do we get at that maximum size or floor area? Just to say maximum size doesn't tell me enough. If we have some sort of a far designation, we have some ratios or something we could look at, that would help me be more comfortable. And I think that's a way to get, I think both Tracy and Dwight and I are talking about the same thing. And I think other commissioners feel the same way. As we don't want to have structures being built in our current neighborhoods that are out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood. So really what we've got are three ways to get at it. So I think, Lori, maybe what we need is more help from staff on how do we build in the type of assurances that we want?
Well, I would say from staff's perspective, if you want those assurances, option B is the best approach.
So can you come back to us with some bar examples about what that would look like on a typical?
Yeah, if the commission is comfortable with B, that would be the idea. But then staff would come back with actual draft regulations that could provide information on what that would look like.
Yeah, I think that would really work well with the ADUs. Yeah, once we had some specific sort of visions really of what this would look like. I'm kind of curious on that A there, you say that's the approach taken in most of the other jurisdictions surveyed. Do you have any, you know, sort of knowledge of why they chose that and have that, you know, what, if any effects that's had in their jurisdictions or?
I don't know. It's certainly the simplest approach. But from staff's perspective, I would caution you because as Commissioner Bonaschinsky has pointed out, you will end up potentially with structures that are like the new existing houses that she is concerned about. The current regulations allow a significant amount of development on a lot. Of course, it matches the new development. So that would be a rational, a reason for taking that approach. It's the simplest and it, new duplexes, triplexes would look like new houses. If you have discomfort with way new houses look, then probably B with a more restrictive size would be better. C might accomplish the same thing, but if you had a, there's the potential for what I would consider a lack of fairness in option C, because it's kind of the luck of the draw. Wherever your property is, all of a sudden, what's next to you? If there are two tiny houses, then, well, is that really fair?
May I suggest, I think that that's a good idea to come back with some examples. But say if you could get one example, or maybe two, and say, well, if you had A, this is what would happen if. And I'm not saying you should draw it out into, you know, infinitum. But just in this example, if you had A, this is what would happen. B, this is what would happen. C, this is what would happen. Then we could actually, you know, wrap our arms around what you're saying in a more real example. And I hope that's not, wouldn't be too much work to do that.
We'll figure it out. I wish I had my intern. Who did all those wonderful ADU drawings?
Here's the fly in the ointment that's been in my head and bothering me over the last few weeks is, what, if we think about the way developers put together projects, and Dwight, you've seen this in your, I think in your own area, right? It's consolidation. You buy up two R6 slots. Now, what, now what are you, what can you do there in terms of a townhouse? A couple of triplexes, multiple duplexes? What does that look like? Because that I think would be one of the major concerns we have. And I don't know how we've, I don't think we've addressed that. Or is that not a concern?
Well, if, if you're not changing the minimum lot size, which is not something that we've talked about for the R6 zone, then if you were doing a short plaid of multiple parcels, then you're back to the same question, what could be built on a single lot? Is it the same as you could build with a single family house? Or is there a maximum size? Or are you looking at this, what do the neighboring properties look like? So I don't think it's, there's not something inherent in this discussion that would result in a dramatically different potential pattern of development, because the lot sizes are not changing.
But if, if someone were to buy two or more R6 lots, consolidate them into a single project, what does that do in terms of their ability to be able to put a larger structure there? You've got maybe two, maybe three homes on there right now. And you scrape those off. And now you've got a double lot or a triple lot in which you can now build a larger structure.
Well, not if you go with option B. If you go with option A, certainly you could, because that, the only control on the size of the structure is impervious surface limitations and the setbacks on the lot. And if you have a much bigger lot, your setbacks don't take up that much of the lot. And you could build a larger structure. If you go with option B, there's a maximum size specified for a duplex or a triplex. And you cannot exceed that regardless of how big your lot is.
So at that point, you're restricted by the limitation on the size of the structure, not the available zoning on the land.
Correct.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on this? Lori, do you have some direction?
Well, I, I think, just, I think what I'm hearing is that option B is the preferred approach. If that's not what I'm hearing and the group wants to see examples for all three approaches, that's one thing. If B is the preferred approach, then I'll bring back examples for option B only.
I could live with that, just since I suggested the three approach system. Because if we don't like what we see in B, then we can go back to the drawing board. So I'm okay with that. Anything to reduce your workload.
That's awful.
Just make a semantic difference in saying that, I don't think, I personally am ready to say that B is preferred. But there's enough of a reason I can see to want to know more about it. Yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay, so the next topic is design standards. And you saw that Kirkland and Redmond have extensive design standards for duplexes and triplexes. So the possibility is, as we do for any single family house, not have design standards. The second option is to have minimal design standards, maybe having to do with garages and location of parking, that kind of thing. And then the third approach is to apply more comprehensive design standards, as Kirkland and Redmond have done. Staff would recommend, again, B, that apply some design standards, but not apply so many design standards that getting through any kind of a design review is a cumbersome process. For example, the type of trim you have on the structure or certain second story step backs and that kind of thing. That's certainly something we have for large buildings in the downtown. But staff would not recommend that for a duplex or triplex.
Well, I'll maybe throw it, I thought B was a reasonable compromise here. But I wondered about how how you can, how we can make this compatible with single family neighborhoods when there aren't any single family design standards. I guess I'm not quite clear. You mentioned a couple of examples, garages and what, how? How can that be achieved?
Well, we we could apply design standards specifically to duplexes and triplexes. When we list uses in the zoning, we often have footnotes that put additional standards on them. So if we were going to apply design standards to duplexes or triplexes, we would do it that way. Or we would reference a different, we'd create a new zoning code section. So it's possible to do that for these structures versus a single family residence. The 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 purpose was just to try to control the way these structures looked, to think about improving the design of them. We don't, of course, do that for single families. So if the commission is comfortable saying they should be able to build to whatever design they choose to, we don't control a single family. I mean, that's a perfectly reasonable approach. It just it, the question is how far the planning commission would like to go in terms of controlling what a duplex or triplex is.
Well, the goal is right, is compatibility, right? The existing neighborhoods. And if there are no design standards for, I I guess I'm not quite getting, you know, B does sound like a reasonable compromise, but as you explain that, I maybe, maybe it's not, maybe it's not reasonable. Any other thoughts on this? Go ahead, Mike.
I hear you, Mark. I was kind of having that same trouble myself. What do you, where do you start here? I'm in favor of B, where I think we come up with some design standards. And the way I thought about this is, well, one of the reasons you don't really need to get a too detailed in single family housing in design standards, because I think there's a certain expectation of people's sense of homeownership and house pride, that they're going to, they're going to take care of it and they're going to build a house that, something that they find attractive. If you're getting into a one of the middle, housing standard duplex or triplex, I think you're getting more into rental for profit sorts of developments. And their idea of what a standard would be and what they would want to build to could be very different based upon that profit. Well, I think some things particularly related to landscaping, external lighting. You know, what, 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 what does this look from the street side? I think there are some things we could probably come up with there. This might be something to actually get some input on back from the public. But I would want to keep it minimal, but I'd want to make sure that we came up, I think we could come up with some that would ensure that there's a compatibility with these developments with the rest of the neighborhood. Or typically what you do see in that neighborhood.
If we could use design standards, and I have my heavenly notes well chosen, but minimal, that address the most important aspects that we would like to control for. And I actually wasn't even thinking about compatibility, because I guess if single family homes don't have these design standards, then there's nothing for us to match to in that way. But perhaps there are other things that we have valued as a commission, like we've talked a lot about people oriented development and things like that. And maybe if there are some standards that we could insert into these missing middle housing type developments, that that could be a good way for us to promote those values. And I don't know, something like, you know, just setting the garage back from the front of the house is just one example that I can think of to set like, put the people forward and push the cars back. So if there's a way that we can use it that way, then I would be in favor of of B.
So is what your YouTube, Mike and Tracy are saying is that somewhere in between B and C?
Yeah, I think so. That's probably my I haven't done this, so I don't know what we involve with maybe going through some of those comprehensive design standards and checking off and say, you know, here's the half dozen that I really are most impactful. And they could cook things like, you know, some of these may already be covered as a requirement, things like surface water management. Impermeable surfaces. What do those look like? What could they be composed of? Landscaping, you know, what sort of vegetation do they have? Setting you'd, things that you'd expect to see in a typical, single family home that people would want to have there as an amenity. Make sure that there's, another one occurred to me is ADA standards. I don't know what the coverage or requirements are to build a duplex or a triplex that would have disability or compatibility for for senior housing. I mean, those are the sorts of things I would look, I would look to it. Again, you know, I don't want to, it could be a huge list, and I don't want to make this onerous. But I do think there are some basic things that you'd expect to see that would make it compatible with the neighborhood as a whole.
Any other thoughts on this one?
I agree with B. I like B that there should be some design standards, but not so many that it would be. It would dissuade people from building.
Ethan Dennis, you thinking along those lines too?
Yeah, I'm thinking along those lines. Originally, I was thinking I'd be more between B and C. Because I know that we've expressed concerns that we don't want these, well, things to get too out of hand. But I I'm happy to see where B goes and I'm fine, fine with that.
So again, the next steps would, now that I have sort of a general direction, would be that I would draft some amendments and obviously come back and we can discuss it and and look at options and alternatives. So the last one is parking. And I would like to tell you that we have free rein in parking, but we actually do not. So the state in the last legislative session said that for market rate multifamily housing units within a quarter mile of a transit stop, only point seven five parking space can be required. And an ordinance to that effect went to the city council and the city council deferred action on that wanting to have a equity impact analysis, a tool that the city doesn't have quite yet. Feeling like this was in some way discriminatory towards folks living closer to transit, that they couldn't have as many parking spaces. They can, of course, have as many parking spaces as is wished, but the city cannot mandate more than point seven five space per unit. Regardless of city council action, state laws in place and the city has to conform to it. So I guess what I'm giving you here is a heads up, because this is a significant change from our current parking standards, not so much for multifamily development, but certainly for a single family development, which is two spaces per unit.
So All right, I have two questions about that. So one is that a developer could provide more than point seven five parking spaces. The city just cannot mandate it. That's right. Okay, I understand correctly. Okay. And then can you describe to me what point seven five of a parking space means?
So point seven five of a parking space, it would be per unit. So for example, if you had two units, you would owe 1.5 parking spaces and then rounding happens. So that you would have to provide two parking spaces. For a duplex, can I do this quickly in my head? One and a half plus point two and a quarter, so you probably have to provide three parking spaces. I'm fairly certain that parking rounding occurs the instant you go over a whole number. Housing units, it's a different rounding, so I I should double check that, but I'm
And you think it's always up, so like below a half or above a half, it's just always up.
I think it's always up.
Okay, thank you.
I think I have a point seven five car, so.
You'll fit in a point seven five space.
Well, if you you take the F one fifty, my car is less than point seven five of that. So what can you do, you know?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
The other piece of this that I thought was important, it's kind of stuck at the end here, is this idea that there can, exception can be made if you're in an area that has no street parking or I think that's something we need to keep in mind. I don't think that that's an issue in any of our quarter of a mile zone. But I don't know that that's a fact. So e- even in the future, if that should expand in some way, I think that would be something we'd want to build in there.
I believe that the ordinance that went forward to council included that language.
It did. Okay, good. So we just need to be consistent with that. Well, it went forward, but was it, I thought you said it wasn't passed.
It was not, but it, again, it's the state rules supersede our local regulations. So it'll be a little bit awkward in terms of using that second clause particularly. But I'm sure the council at some point will revisit the ordinance.
Yeah, I just don't want to put us in a situation where you're going to have expecting people to park where there, where there is no street to park on.
Yeah, maybe we'll bring the question back, because we'll have to do zoning for duplexes and triplexes. And we'll put points in five per unit, and then we can do something comparable to the original ordinance.
Well, the issue of multi, you know, family downtown corridor. I get consistent complaints from many people about the traffic as well as the lack of parking down in and near the city hall, across the street and all those other multi-family units that are, there is just no street parking, it's completely taken up. And in some cases, it's taken up during the time when businesses need the parking. So this is a real subject. I don't think that it's not happening. I think it's already happening in our downtown area. And so maybe what we should be thinking about is we don't want it to spread.
Well, we'll have to lobby the state of Washington to make that happen. So those were all of the items that I had related to zoning standards. And then the second business item on your agenda was to talk about the forum, which is very exciting. So scheduled for November sixteenth, which is a regular meeting time for you, although we're starting at six, going until eight, open house format. You probably all saw the flyer that went out today, and we've posted it. And there are social media posts that will go out next week. We're working on a press release, et cetera. And it's going to be something new, so we hope it's going to work and be successful. We are going to have multiple rooms in the Zoom format. There will be an welcoming room. And then three, actually four additional rooms, one on housing data and information, one on the vision statement, so we can get community feedback on that. And then the third one on missing middle housing. People will be able to move from room to room, and we're hoping to stagger the presentations, so they don't all occur at the same time. So you could move from one to the other. We will have staff from our consulting group, PRR, hosting the welcome room and then one of the other rooms and then we'll staff remaining rooms. So that's the plan and we're working hard on it, so hopefully it will all come together. And I hope you'll all be there and and hear the comments. We have some preliminary questions identified a lot with the vision statement, at least around the questions that you had raised in your notes. And then housing data and information, it's more, you know, what pieces of information did you find most interesting? And how do you think that relates to housing and Kim, more of those kind of questions? And then missing middle, really some feedback on these very preliminary directions. So any questions about the forum?
Are you expecting us to, I think you mentioned last time, obviously, you know, we probably want to move around as well, or are we supposed to be in different, what, what's?
What, whatever you choose, it's, we're really trying to mimic a an open house that we might have in the community meeting room at city hall, where, you know, commissioners typically come and move from area to area to hear different conversations. If there's one that you're particularly interested in and want to stay put, you're, you're your choice, if you want to move from room to room, your choice as well.
And again, our function is mainly to listen, right? And perhaps ask anybody have questions about that? It sounds pretty straightforward. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, not, yes, I do agree. I think it's very straightforward. I think it should work well. What I was thinking about is, do we want to have some kind of a debrief among ourselves? After this meeting? Or how do we go about digesting that and sharing each other's impression?
I had envisioned that as an agenda item for December seventh, which is your next meeting. The other thing that's going to be on that meeting is information from our public works department about a comprehensive plan change for the public works shop in the north part of the city. So those would be the two items. Really, I dedicated that December seven meeting to your conversation about what you heard and whether that led you in a different direction.
Yeah, I think it definitely needs to be an agenda item. I was wondering, that's, there's quite a lag time between what we will have heard and when we would have that discussion. I'll throw something out. This meeting ends at eight. Would there be any possibilities that we could take time from eight to nine right after the meeting? Just to talk among ourselves?
Um, well, we will have lost our I don't know what to call them, our facilitators, the PRR tech people who would help us with that and who were going to close down the meeting and then have actually a debrief with staff about how it went and lessons for the future.
I don't know that we would need that facilitation to be there. I was thinking more just among ourselves.
We'd have to set up a different, we'd have to set up a second meeting format to make that happen. Because with this meeting is set up as a community forum and and it's been operated by a consultant to make sure it works. If you wanted to have an additional time, we'd have to sort of set up a, almost like a second meeting for the, for the planning commission. So it'd have to be a community forum from six to eight, and then you'd have to let people know to leave and join another meeting and from eight to nine. And another option which to consider is December seventh would be likely your last meeting unless you wanted to meet the twenty first of December. In lieu of not meeting on the twenty first, which I don't know if there's going to be a lot of appetite for that. You could see if there is an opportunity for a meeting, a short meeting, an additional meeting between the seventh to to have that discussion and provide some preliminary feedback before the seventh. That's another option. But again, you've got Thanksgiving thrown in the middle coming up as well, so.
Well, that was just my thought. I don't know what the other commissioners, what they're thinking, if that'd be worthwhile or not.
Thoughts from others? Thoughts from others on?
I I'm thinking in in terms of trying to add another hour on to that. Meeting. I know for myself, I I get kind of tired. Trying to focus and listen on what what everybody's saying and then kind of make sense of it. So I think for myself, I would need some time to just kind of settle and think about what I heard and process it before. I would be ready to talk about it.
I feel exactly as Suzanne does. Yeah, I'm I'm a digester, so.
Does staff know when you'll be able to have your meeting with the facilitators?
We're meeting that night from five thirty to eight thirty. So we do our prep at five thirty and then the. Open houses from six to eight and then the meeting with the facilitators is eight to eight thirty to close everything down and and get initial reactions.
Well, if we were looking at. An extra short interim meeting, could it be one week? From this.
That's the twenty third. That's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. It's.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think staff is available. I don't I don't know where commissioners are with availability.
Well, I guess it sounds like there's a lot of enthusiasm for this, so.
I actually do think it would be valuable to. Discuss as you were suggesting, Mike, and I. For a variety of reasons, one being that it's I think it's really important to hear from the community and. Deeply consider it and discussing it amongst ourselves would be one way to do that. And I'm I'm open to another special meeting. I just I'm kind of tired right now and I don't know. I don't really know what the what what my best proposal is for that. I don't. My creative juices are kind of low, but I but I am open to meeting again if if it does happen.
Well, the two Tuesdays, if you want to stick with that format. Between the sixteenth and December seventh are the twenty third and the thirtieth.
The thirtieth is difficult for me.
That's my seventieth birthday.
That's very difficult.
I think the thirtieth will not work. And what about the twenty third?
That would work.
Works for me.
Yeah, now again, just be focused on it, kind of a debrief, right? And I guess with that leave open the possibility on the seventh, we could, I don't know, would there be more to talk about on the seventh or? Would this pretty much be our? Our one or one crack at the the debris for.
You can talk about it as much as you wish. I think on the. Seventh again, the public workshop is going to be on the agenda. And I imagine that might take a half an hour, maybe a little bit longer by the time you ask questions and. And react to it, but if you. We can put it on that agenda as well if there's anything else you want to say.
I think that's a pretty hot topic right now that public works deal. From what I understand.
So what about an optional meeting on the twenty third and whoever can be there and feel like. They want to discuss the open house they can. With whoever can be there from the city and then it would also be on the agenda in December.
We'd need to have at least four.
Yeah, that's a meeting, correct, if we have yet more.
Yep.
Okay, well, should we take a show of hands on the twenty third? How does that sound? All right, looks like we have a. More or less full house, so. We'll plan on that. Thank you, Mike, because I think, yeah, one week is a lot better than maybe three weeks is a lot of. Lot of water under the bridge, so.
Mr. Chair. May I, I I don't know how this is done as far as the Zoom land of of meetings and like. Workshops, but I think it might be appropriate for us to. Edit our names to put behind the name planning commissioner or commissioner or something. So that when we are in a room or something, people know that a commissioner is present. And I think that goes for two things is awareness as well as them knowing that the commission. Is concerned and interested in their feedback, whether it's one of us or three of us or whatever that case may be. And also I was wrong about the eighteenth. It is the tenth, just for the record.
I think that Rita, did you have a comment? Are you?
Yeah, I can I can add the titles. I don't know if it shows the whole title when you're. Yeah, I can I can mess around with it.
And and are you available on the twenty third?
Off the top of my head, I I think I am.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a plan then for the obviously for the. The meeting on the. Sixteenth and then the twenty third, you'll send us some information about that. All right. Well, anything else for us tonight? Notes after nine. So any any other business for? Us tonight? All right, I think we're good. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, yeah.
Good night. Thank you.